We'll have it going on twenty five.
Pretty.
Davis, when is gonna be in town tomorrow?
Yeah, she's coming in town, yeah.
All right, then I need to contact her, I have a couple.
Oh, that's nice, right?
First I've heard of it.
Oh, we don't need that many.
Yeah, who would know?
I know Kelly.
Okay.
I'm trying to think, one in the morning, where me that ate by flowers.
Gretchen got a bunch of the bases, as many as she could get.
Well, she said she had a hard time, she texted me and I said she.
Uh, her book club pizza came from.
I saw Jane, anyway. I'm gonna say six.
Yeah, she's got eight or so.
That's all we need. While we're on each side.
Okay.
Going in the morning to do that. And Brett and them, these sweet girls and Brett. These sweet girls and Brett, they're doing a lot.
Blame the PNC guys.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm gonna do. Good.
All right, we're ready. Fran, you ready?
Okay, it's five o'clock, we're gonna call the Thursday, October sixteenth, regular city council meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, into the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I believe, Father George.
Let us pray. God of love, we praise you and thank you for your fatherly care over our children, especially we thank you for the blessings you bestow on our town and its people. We thank you for those who plan and those who work hard, we possibly pray so, peace and fellowship. We thank you to bless this gathering so that the deliberations may be done, the guidance of your spirit, and may it yield good fruits for our town. We make our prayer with Jesus Christ our Lord, amen.
Amen.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, and I just wanted to point it out, I don't know if you guys have noticed, but this wall.
It's already.
Yeah, they picked up the whole dais and moved it this way, two and a half feet, and then built a wall and painted it to match.
I didn't believe it, I didn't even.
In case you didn't even notice.
I did.
I will.
And it didn't take too long.
It's construction progress.
So we're done?
Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is proclamations and presentations. Our first presentation is by the Port Aransas Emergency Medical Services Department on their whole blood program.
All right, okay, Council Mayor, thank you for having us. Um, we're just excited to say we're a hundred percent in service with whole blood on the ambulances, so, uh, we got our first units on October first. And, uh, we wanted to just kinda come out and tell you all a little bit about it and show you all how it works and what we're gonna have, and we're just super excited, this is a huge thing for our city, for, for our citizens. It's a true game changer in the EMS field, and us being first in the region for having whole blood in, on an ambulance, so it's really exciting. A couple of big things is, we worked side by side with the Coastal Bend Blood Center, and, uh, some of their folks are here today, and we'll give them a chance to say something, and then same thing with our Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council. And so that they kinda govern all things medical within the hospitals, EMS, uh, you know, helicopters, everybody, so, like I said, it's just a really exciting time, and, uh, would y'all like to say something?
Come on up, come on.
Is Ellie gonna be the guinea pig?
I just wanna say what a big deal this is to, to provide low tide or whole blood on an ambulance service, and, and Port Aransas is the, is the first ones to do it on a ground ambulance, um, service. And that's, it's just a big deal for our community, you know, when, when there's a trauma situation or a mass bleeding situation, minutes, seconds matter, and, um, Port Aransas is a little bit further away from the hospital, so, uh, having that tool to use is gonna help save lives, it's definitely gonna improve some outcomes on patients, and we've been working with Daniel and his team for, I don't know, it's been eighteen months? And, uh, Daniel's team been great, there's a lot of prep work that goes along doing this, and a lot of equipment and validation, they've done a really, really good job seeing the student to finish line, so, uh, big congrats, a big win for our community, big win for City Port Aransas and the community. And I can't, I can't thank the donors enough, right, 'cause none of this is possible without volunteer blood donors in, in our community, so.
So, there they go. And you're, what, what was your name again?
I'm Corey Savant, we're Coastal Bend Blood.
Okay, great, thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much, Corey, thank you for the teamwork.
Good evening, everybody, I'm Hillary Watt, um, from the Coastal Bend Regional Advisory Council, we work with all the hospitals and EMS. Um, kudos to Daniel and his team, they've worked collaboratively with the blood center, with us, this is a statewide initiative, so, the goal is to get whole blood in, uh, all two hundred and fifty-four counties in Texas. Um, this was funded by the legislature, the Texas Legislature, ten million over the biennium, so, um, once we get the program started and up and running here, um, the reimbursements will flow through us and the blood will be paid for, so, and, uh, ultimately, that's gonna save lives in the field for trauma OB patients and medical patients, so we could not be more excited to have, um, the, just the passion from Port A and all the people here that have been really truly working as a team, which is not always the case in other areas, so, very proud of our area for, again, coming through and working together to make this happen, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
So now, I guess we'll have Elliot and Paul, you know, pioneers of blood over here, Paul actually, uh, he, he gave blood at his old service, and he was one of the first people in the state, and, uh, so it's pretty cool to be able to have him working for us full time now.
So Daniel, we'll have this on at all our rigs?
So, so it's that noisy thing you hear, and our cooler, so that right there stores our blood, and, uh, it keeps it, uh, about four degrees Celsius at all times. And so, it, what it runs, it runs on, of course, it can be plugged in the ambulance, but it can run up to four days whenever you unplug it, so if we need to take it out on a call, go do something with it, then with the thing is.
Yeah. And how many types of blood will you carry?
We're just gonna carry O positive.
O positive.
Anybody can.
Cause, cause anyone can take that, that's what I am.
This heats the blood up, of course, you don't, you don't want cold blood going into you, especially when you're shocked, you know, you want warm blood, uh, so, ideally, there were two of us. One of us would, uh, do the warmer, and one of us would set up those bags of blood, okay, so, I'll just demonstrate real quick how quick a unit of blood can go into someone with this, it's called a blood phaser. Uh, so with this blood phaser, we can get it into someone within two to three minutes, a whole, a whole unit of blood.
What do you warm the blood up to, what, what temperature does it warm?
It varies just slightly, but roughly ninety-nine degrees.
Oh, what, your body temperature would be?
Time it, it, you know, it has to go, it has to go through here, so by the time, actually, you can fill these, it's not how long it is.
Oh, cool.
This is an expired bag of blood.
That's good.
Okay. Okay.
What, what is the shelf life on a bag?
Apparently, the shelf life on the actual bag is, is twenty-one days, the blood center's working, will change that, so it's actual bag, you know, the thirty-five days, and that's what they're currently working on. Um, so every seven days, the blood center comes out to us, and they pick up the blood from us, and they give us new unit of blood, and then they take the unit that we had to the hospitals and they can use that.
Oh, use it.
The little weights.
Yes.
Okay, that's good.
Cause they'll definitely use it.
Have y'all gotten to use this?
Not yet.
Not yet.
So we have to flush the saline through first.
Sorry, I have all these questions.
Clear out all the air in the line.
Oh, yeah.
Have twenty seconds to flush it, so now this line is primed, just means it's full of saline. Now, what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna swipe this blood bag. The point of all this is so none of the blood gets wasted, every drop goes into the patient.
Very good.
And how, how hard is the certification for the troops to get it?
It, it's just training.
Yeah, just training.
So we, we've been training, like I said, from last year, and doing, you know, every month, and then we've been to blood academies and sanitation, and just, that's how we learn about the products and. Now, he's gonna start pumping the, uh, the gun.
Oh, there it goes.
So someone getting transfused right now. And it's a little, uh, it's a little quiet, cause it's been sitting here for a while, but I figured you'd take it right up.
Oh, there it goes.
Dale, you doing all right?
Uh, Daniel and Elliot, last week, when you were doing this demonstration for my mayor's youth council, you were telling them that as being a donor in Port Aransas is very likely that your blood could be used for these whole life, whole blood program, and is that?
Tell the team and the, and the plan, and the region, figure out who we is, O positive, low tide, and kinda have like an idea of your, of your collection bank, but it's being the fact that if we're having whole blood here, then it's most likely, if we do a bunch of flood drives and everything else and donate, we get our, our, our numbers up in, yeah, it very well be.
I know, and I think that's remarkable to think that you as a community member could be making a donation that could save the life of another community member, yeah.
So, open the line up the blood if we pretend that we gave the entire bag of blood, once that's done, we close the blood off, and we open up the saline again, this is where I said, no, no drop, which leads to going to the patient, so you'll see the line start to go clear, clear in a second. We just wanna make sure that patients get the entirety of the blood. And it's got a lot of fellow saves, like in that little phaser, if, if the line gets clogged or something going on, not truly high pressure or something, you know, the handle's built where it'll snap, so, it'll, it'll break, the handle let you, not let you do it, you know, in order to not harm the patient or doing anything. Also, gotta feel safe, that tube, that's a part of the gun, um, if, if the line is clamped, that tube will expand really big, and it'll kinda give you the telltale sign that it's, that hey, you gotta clog somewhere, so that's when you check the lines, make sure, maybe start a new line, whoever you gotta do, make sure to do it. But, all in all, that, we just wanted y'all to know, all the steps in the process, and, and, uh, the funding and the work and everybody's put into it, and this is kinda what it's all to, to the career of the council, so, very exciting times.
Good job, guys.
Oh.
Exciting that you switched hearts for that.
Yeah. And very appreciative of the Coastal Bend Blood Center and regional team to, to make that happen, so, that's awesome.
Wow. Sorry, we made you work harder.
Don't forget that.
Yeah.
The important.
How much will that hold?
It'll hold six units, you know, we currently carry one unit and then two units of plasma.
Very good, thanks for the demo.
Great job. Okay, our next item is, we're gonna have a special recognition today of Ms. Beth Owens, who was recently appointed to the Corpus Christi Regional Transit Authority. Ms. Owens, please come to the front so we can congratulate you last two weeks ago.
Yeah, can't get enough, huh?
Those of you who know Ms. Owens, she is a former city council person, if you don't know her, served her time, and, um, recently, we had the opportunity as the city of Port Aransas, I sit on the small mayor's council for the RTA board, and we got to vote to add someone to the RTA board, which represented our city, so, um, we nominated Beth Owens, and, yeah.
But Beth has worked with the RTA before, so, yeah.
She's done a great job, so.
She worked on the shuttle, the, um, what was the line, what was the shuttle one that you worked on, ninety-five, got that, was super instrumental in getting that role, and so she's not a rookie to the RTA, and she, you know, she knows, um, the importance of getting workers moved around. And so, you know, that's, that's what we needed on there, someone who's, has that enthusiasm to, you know, help the workforce get here and know how the RTA kinda operates, and so I think she's a, a great fit.
And she's already been to a meeting.
She had two days before my first meeting, and it was exciting, I was like, are you sure we're not in Port A? But, no, I'm excited, you know, I, I don't know if anybody knows this, but when I first moved here, I took Delmar class, and Kelly and I could only afford one car, and so I would drive the city bus into Delmar, I would study on the way there, and, uh, and ride back, so I've always kinda, when I got on city council, you know, I would see the trolley back in the day, and with nobody in it, and I was like, hmm, what is going on here, and then, we started getting, you know, employees and working on the issues and everything, so I'm excited. It's like I told, uh, them, I'm excited to be a part of RTA because I've seen it on this side, but to be internally on this side, and I'm hoping that relationship gets better in our transportation problems that we've had for years and years and years, and, I don't know what I could do, but I'm gonna try.
You're gonna do great.
Well, I'm up here with the microphone, thank y'all so much, this city, I mean, I'm so super proud of this town and the way it has recovered after Harvey and just everything, it's just, it's, I know it's a thankless job, so thank y'all very much for everyone's time.
Thank you, and congratulations. Okay, all right, we'll move on to item four, which is citizens' comments and reports. Fran, I don't have any, so I'm assuming that means there's none, okay, all right. Okay, then we'll move on to number five, which is the consent agenda, and in the consent agenda is items A, which is the city council minutes from August eleventh, September eleventh, and September eighteenth. Ordinance, uh, second reading amending the code of ordinance is chapter two administration and article three city council, and then C, ordinance, second reading amending the code of ordinance is chapter two administration, article five financial matters. Um, if there's any items that you guys wish to pull from the consent agenda, let me know, otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
All right, there's a motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes. Councilor Chambers.
Yes.
Councilor Kruger.
Yes.
Councilor Owens. Oh, Councilor Schumacher.
Yes.
May Pritham Crawford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, all right, thank you, so items for consideration, we'll start with D, resolution awarding request for qualifications RFQ twenty twenty-five thirteen, for the design and creation of a maritime public memorial sculpture, authorizing the use of funds from the Hotel Motel Special Fund, account two fifty, capital outlay account fifty-three-ten, approving a future budget amendment for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate the contract for the agreement and act as the authorized representative in all matters relating to the award and execution of the contract. Ms. Colleen, thank you.
I didn't have a lot prepared, in your agenda, um, the packet shows the proposals that we received, and staff was, um, David, myself, and Nicole, and the mayor scored as well, um, and so our recommendation is to go with, uh, Buddy Tatum. Uh, he's a local artist, which I think is great, uh, has done work in the Corpus Christi area that you probably would recognize, um, he also did the Joseph sculpture at our Catholic church, so he knows the materials and the, um, environment that these are, um, that we're dealing with, and so I think that, uh, it is a really good fit, and we can, uh, discuss different concepts with him, the work provided was just examples of their skill sets, and so, um, we'll have to work on a contract and a, a scope of work, and so hopefully you'll have input on what you would like to see out there, but I think bronze is a good fit, and a local artist is great, and I was really pleased with the responses that we got, so.
We got some great responses, and I think that, um, there's some enthusiasm there for, to get that going, so that's good, yes, thank you for your work on that, in the team. Okay, any questions? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the resolution awarding requesting for qualifications RFQ twenty-five dash thirteen for the design and creation of a public memorial sculpture to H.W. Buddy Tatum, authorizing the use of funds from the Hotel Motel Special Fund, account two fifty, capital outlay five zero three one zero, approving future budget amendment, fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, authorizing city manager to negotiate contract agreement and act as the city's authorized representative.
All right, any further discussion? All right, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilor Kruger.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers.
Yes.
Councilor Christensen.
Yes.
May Pritham Crawford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, all right, item E, award for request for qualifications for professional design services for the animal shelter for the city of Port Aransas, authorizing the use of funds from the general fund account zero five zero, capital outlay account five nine three two zero, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate a contract agreement, and act as the city's authorized representative in all matters related to award and execution of the contract.
So for this RFQ, we had eight responses, which I think was incredible, um, those eight responses were reviewed by myself, David Chief, and Jo Ellen, um, you can see in your pocket the link to all of them, hopefully everybody had a chance to look, and, um, I compiled all the scores together on that front page, so you see the combined list of all four scores, and then the average of all four scores, both of those work out to be the same, um, for first place Shelter Planners of America, which I think was pretty incredible with the score that everybody gave them, um, followed by HGA Architects and Architecture essay, um, they all had a lot of, um, animal shelter experience, uh, animal clinic experience, and believe they could get the job done. So our staff recommendation is Shelter Engineers of America.
Like that was kinda hands down.
I mean, it was, yeah, yeah, with the amount of experience they have, um, both with animal shelters and locally here, which makes a huge difference, um, I think it was a, it's a good choice.
Okay, great, anybody have any questions, comments? All right, do we have a motion?
It's so good on the last one.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution awarding request for qualifications RFQ for professional design services for the animal shelter to the Shelter Planners of America. Um, authorizing the use of funds from the general fund account zero five zero, capital outlay account fifty-nine three twenty, and authorizing the city manager to negotiate the contract agreement, and act as the city's authorized representative in all matters related to award and executive of the contract.
I'll second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Chambers.
Yes.
Councilor Christensen.
Yes.
Councilor Kruger.
Yes.
Councilor Schumacher.
Yes.
May Pritham Crawford.
Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. All right, item F, awarding request for proposal RFP to the depository contract services to American Bank N.A., designate American Bank N.A. to serve as a depository for the city of Port Aransas funds, and directing the designated officers to enter into agreement with the depository for a term not longer than five years, and authorizing the city manager to sign said agreement.
So we issued an RFP for depository sw- services, this is required to do once every five years, and we issued an RFP for a two-year contract with three one-year automatic renewals, your depository has to be inside your city limits, so the only three available would be American Bank, Value Bank, and the credit union, credit union did not respond, so we got two responses, one from Value Bank, one from American Bank, and in the, um, I put an analysis of the cost in your packet, and Value Bank did come out to where their services would be cheaper for us, but there was a big, um, operational time deadline they have of having to have ACHs processed by two o'clock, and American Bank is four o'clock, and that is a very big difference when we're trying to do something like payroll, like today was payroll, and it's not summer, but it had a holiday, it was a little bit busier than normal, but we didn't get our file finished till three thirty, sometimes in the summer, we are sweating, all hands on deck, trying to get it there by four, three forty-five, two, I just, it really worried me that we would not be able to process some of our things in a timely manner, and we're paying more and more things by ACH as time goes by, otherwise, I think their services were pretty similar, but our recommendation is staff, even though the cost is a little bit higher, um, to stay with American Bank and not do a move of banks. So if you have any other questions, though.
The term will be five years?
The term, yes, well, the term is two years with three automatic one-year renewals, where we don't have to go out for bid if we don't want to, but after two years, if we're want to go out to bid, we can.
And if any one of these institutions were to change, what would happen, in other words, if we're in agreement with annuity, and then somehow there's a change there, does that hinder this in any way, or do we have?
It should not, they should honor it. As, I mean, I know there is gonna be a change for American Bank, and I know that it's gonna be honored, because we're already under contract, and they said they would honor it, is what I was told.
Darla, what's the cost associated with, if you do move, there is a cost associated with that too, is that reflected on your?
It's not reflected, because we'd have to, most of your cost is, cost is staff cost, because we have to, we get paid by so many different agencies via direct deposit, we have, um, about eight different credit card processors, several different e-check processors, our Medicaid, our, um, state comptroller, all of those direct deposits into our accounts have to be changed, and then, of course, ordering, um, new checks and deposit slips and all that, which we do have to order checks for the current one we're in, but not as many, cause we keep them on hand, but I did not do an analysis of what the cost would be to.
Darla, you have two totals here, the depository services.
This page, the page four and five, I don't know where those came from, they were probably in the Excel pop in the prior, I just saw them in there tonight, and I was like, hmm, that's from two, three, five years ago.
So where's the price difference on the RFP?
The price difference on, um, my analysis, cause I could only analyze one month, each month is gonna change, but depending on how much we keep at the bank, et cetera, the cost for American Bank was four hundred and forty-seven dollars a month, the cost for Value Bank for those same services would be nothing, so you're looking at about four to six hundred dollars a month, I'd say you might be at, um, say if it's six hundred, that's six thousand seventy-two hundred dollars. say if it's 600, that's $6,7200 for the year.
Difference?
Difference. If you were hitting $600 a month at Value Bank.
So where it says 331 for American and seven and six for value, that you're supposed to disregard that one?
Yeah, I paid attention to that one. That one, I don't know how it got in there. It must have been in my Excel sheet when I attached it to the packet. It was from the prior prior bid. Or a prior bid. I don't even know which year that would have been. So the, the one is page 146 and 147.
And Value Bank gives a higher credit for your deposits?
That's what they're doing. They're giving a higher credit for the deposits we keep on hand. And that fluctuates daily. We really, we keep most of our money in the pools, the state pools. We have, we have accounts at Tex Pool, Texas Class Logic. Those are three state pools for government agencies that we keep money at. Um, we try to use the depository more as a pass through and not keep a ton of money there because it's not earning interest like the others are. You're just getting credit against your deposits. But, you know, you have to have them. And then we also have, um, a money market account and some CDs. So we're a little diversified.
So even though the numbers change every month, the amount they're giving us on our earnings, on our deposits is, will always be higher?
It will, well.
Well, depending on what we run through.
Depending on what the interest rate is or they they based it and bring the whole the whole proposal in and I can't remember the term now. It's basically something that's basically set off the Fed rate. They were taking that rate minus two and a half percent and giving us credit for that, which in today's interest rate, it would be 1.65%. And what American Bank giving us is 0.65%. If rates were to fall, if the Fed rate was to fall, because I think that's what that rate is based on, it's in, can't remember the name, I loosely, IOBR, I think was the term. Um, that, that rate could fall. The 1.65 is the rate they based it on, which was, what's 1.65 was two and a half, 4.15 maybe it was, is what it is today. So 4.15 minus 2.5 gets you the 1.65. If it dropped to 3.25 minus 2.5, you're at one, you're almost even. 1.65 was to 3.5, it dropped below 3.15, they would be exactly the same. So it just depends on what that rate is. And over the next five years, you don't know what that rate's going to do. Right now, you know, five years ago, our rate was very low. Now it's higher. So.
I think if the spread were bigger, we would, I would consider Value Bank, but I know changing all your banking stuff is a royal pain and the opportunity cost of switching for $5,000 a year.
And we'd probably have to change our pay weeks by when.
Well, it would be a mess.
It would be a mess.
I think the opportunity.
It would be hard.
Is good in staying in that America.
More than the five grand.
Yeah. Right. I know that there's represented from American Bank here, but, um, I Troy Nicholson in the back, but I don't, I don't know if there's anybody from Value Bank here because I can't see everybody.
Any questions to kind of help relate to that, if that's okay?
Sure.
Right.
If y'all have a question, yeah, sure. Yeah.
And I can tell you the earnings credit at 65 basis points, it's really soft interest to, to help off that piece. There are some months, especially in the summer, when we have larger balances, which are at 65 basis points is enough to offset your entirety. Right. Um, so annualizing it on one month, um, does give some perception, but it doesn't give the whole picture.
And this was actually on our actual last month. Um, I think it was August, actually not September, but we think this was our August performance.
And then with the merge to prosperity burden, so continue on to the contract as well.
Unless theirs is higher. Correct? I haven't checked.
Give us a higher earnings credit?
Yes, just to, just to. And you know, speaking to the whole American, you know, we do have a full treasury service team that's here to support you as well. I can't speak to what Value Bank offers or what they have because I don't know what their organization looks like. Um, but we do try to price as fairly as possible, but you do get a higher level of support. The technologies there are deadlines. We try to extend them as much as we can because we do understand that you've got some fluctuations.
Oh, yeah. I mean, there's been times at 4:05, 4:15, I have called Troy because I do have a cell number. And we said, Troy, we had a really big problem. Oh.
All entered the phone or texted.
Right, the one time it did happen last time while you were on vacation, I forgot that.
Well, that goes a long way. Yeah.
But again, how do you answer any questions you have?
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
Y'all have any more questions for Darla?
I'll motion to approve resolution awarding request RFP for depository contract services to American Bank N A, designating American Bank N A to serve as the depository for the city of Port Aransas funds, directing the designated officers to enter into an agreement with the depository for a term not longer than five years and authorizing city manager to sign said agreement.
I'll second.
Right, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Christian.
Yes.
Mayor Crawford.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers.
Yes.
Councilor Kruger.
Yes.
Councilor Schmiede.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Abstained. All right. Item G, approving a hotel motel tax agreement with the Port Aransas Chamber of Commerce Tourist Bureau for the city's occupancy tax receipts for the period commencing October 1st, 2025 and ending September 30th, 2026. Estimated monthly disbursement to the chamber, a total of 3.25% of the total hotel motel occupancy tax collected by the city, directing that the funds to be transferred to the city, from the city to the chamber monthly as tax revenues are received by the city and authorized city manager to sign all said documents. No, no, last month we had some corrections, so we had to come back and it's all.
Take two.
Take two.
Two, it's all corrected and changed.
Yeah, mostly again, name changes on, you know, what we, what we call ourselves and then
Right.
the common practice, what we do and then our shift in fiscal year. So we are now a calendar fiscal year, so we can have the summer kind of following to our existing fiscal year, calendar year. So all that's been amended in there to kind of reflect that. And to, uh, Councilman Schmiede's point last month, we kind of clarified the 3.25 percentage points of the total seven percentage points. So that's a little more clear about what that means, so.
Good job.
Sounded like a bargain.
Good bargain. We are having a great October.
No, last weekend.
Are you taking all the credit for last weekend?
Did you bring them here? I know, right?
Depends on what you're asking. Yes. It was good and that was.
Careful.
I think a lot of people were very, very happy as a business owner, so. Maybe not as a personal resident, if you were cramped going around town, but I think the business owners were happy.
If your beach was going to be empty.
Yeah, the beach was not empty.
25% plus at the weekend, so it's a busy weekend.
So that's good.
Day trippers, those.
There were so many day, night trippers, day trippers, night trippers, yeah, no, they were definitely.
They were here watching those kites down on the beach that were all lit up. Those were cool.
Yeah, no, it very was. Yeah, lots of stuff going on.
Started blowing up. Everybody wanted a boardwalk.
I bet they did.
I was out of town. I was like, open the garage, it's on the rack. I didn't know what was going on and then they started sending me pictures.
Oh, you had a good view from your house, yeah.
It's right in front of my house.
It was.
So I, I got a lot of pictures of it. Very cool.
Very good, very good.
Question just under, in regards to the two documents in here, we have the hotel tax agreement and it says for fiscal year 25-26. And then the other document that's in the packet is a motel tax fund refund agreement, says fiscal year 26-28 through 28. And so I didn't know if any of those between the two documents, if they have to, if those dates have to.
Okay, where's the one in the?
The highlighted one in the back.
It says what? 155, just the, that title of it just says fiscal year 25-26, the hotel motel.
Oh, 55.
So sometimes you've done multi-year agreements, you're just wanting to do a one-year agreement this time, I think, so.
So I didn't know if those two, if those dates have to be the same or not. I was just an, just an observation or clarification.
That's, is it a one, it's a, uh?
My hair, your budget, if you go down a three percent, your budget next year could have won it. And supersede the 3.25% they have recommended to be 68%.
And in the name consistency, you guys, I know y'all did that. And I think on one in the resolution, it's Port Aransas Chamber of Commerce and Tourist Bureau. And then in the draft, it says Port Aransas Tourist Bureau and Chamber of Commerce. So I know we're doing that, but just to, before we finalize, just to make sure.
That's second one is our name.
Yes. Yes, sir. No, I just, like I said, it was just a couple of things just.
The actual resolution needs corrections.
Yeah. Okay, where is the, yeah, okay, show me.
The, the year is fine if we want to honor the one-year contract, but the actual resolution in the packet still has the incorrect name for the organization. So it needs to be corrected. And not be, not continually refer them to the chamber, but also correct the name from Port Aransas Chamber of Commerce and Tourist Bureau to the Port Aransas
Tourism Bureau.
Yeah.
That's our legal name.
Yes. So we need to just clarify that and make sure we have the correct legal name. And it's important when you reference that just in general, because the chamber is not the piece that's getting the hotel motel tax dollars. Right? They have their own separate budget where they do things with. This is strictly for your tourism piece.
But we're voting just on the resolution, not necessarily on this fiscal, or the, the one behind it, the fiscal year 2026-2028.
Well, we, we do need to have the correct contract in there. But the one in the packet, obviously, we're not going to submit that with all the crossouts and the highlights and that'll have to be cleaned up. Yeah.
Yeah, just like I said, just a couple of clarification things. In regards to that. That's all right.
But I think we can authorize the resolution and approve the resolution noting the correct name change.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Because the percentage is correct and the term is correct. Okay.
Try to do with that in there if you want me to. I move to approve resolution number 2025R, approving the hotel motel tax agreement with the Port Aransas Chamber of Commerce and Tourist Bureau for the fiscal year end 25-26, subject to one to confirm the correct agreement term. Um, and then for the, obviously, or second, excuse me, verification of entity naming consistency across all documents.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? All right, hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Kruger.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers.
Yes.
Councilor Christensen.
Yes.
Councilor Schmiede.
Yes.
Mayor Crawford.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you Brett, for all that you and your team do for us all the time. Lots of extra work. So, thank you, team.
Man, do it so well.
PA Tourism and Chamber. All right.
Bureau.
Bureau, the bureau. All right. H, update and general discussion on the interlocal beach parking permit agreement between City of Port Aransas, City of Corpus, and Oasis County. Right, we made some progress.
Yeah.
We did. So, um, David and myself and Darla got together with the interim city manager in charge of Beach.
Michael Dice.
Michael Dice. Michael came over and met us. Michael needs to be promoted to full-time assistant city manager of Beach, in my opinion, because he did an excellent job in listening and discussing, um, both sides of the deal and was able to take our discussion and our concerns back to his boss and his legal team. And he submitted what is in your packet, um, an agreement that basically gives us the ability to, as a group, raise the beach parking permit fee to $20, which we discussed. And then also after a one-year period, which we're going to have a one-year period where we work through these things and still kind of do our own agreement. But after one year, we will be separating and we will keeping, be keeping what we collect. So if Port Aransas sells a beach parking permit for $20, we will be keeping 84% of that and 16% goes to Oasis County. And when the city of Corpus sells their beach parking permits for $20, they will be keeping their 84% and 16% goes to Oasis County.
So we just have to wait to 2027.
Which we're going to have to probably do anyway because of what we have to do with the GLO and to update our coastal management plan. A- as a group, we're staying together with the unified permit and the unified fee, which is important and we have to go through that process. But yes, after a year, we will then split and be able to collect our own monies separately, so.
I like that.
I think that's a win.
Good job, y'all.
And it happened very quickly and I really appreciate the efforts of Mr. Dice and the city of Corpus's response, so. Anything, David, Darla?
Well, I think the next step would be to officially bring you guys a resolution. Um, once we get the other two entities on board so that we're all doing it as a unified group, to see when they want to bring that to their boards also to actually make the motion and approve the increase and give the directive to all three entities to move forward with the, um, with the changes to your, to their, to each of their coastal management plans. So we, I, I think we want to all do that at the same time.
Okay.
In your coastal management plan, just like we've been learning, we're not going to put a price in there. We're just going to set agreed upon price.
Yeah, we had talked about, um, we, we had talked about putting some type of language in there that gives the entities the ability to over a certain amount of years do like a percentage increase so that it, it, it would give us the latitude to like have a couple of changes over the next 10 or 15 years to where we could, we could alter that without going back to the general end office each time. So I think something like that's probably the best language, not a specific. Well, maybe it has a base number in it, but it gives, it, but it gives the ability to have maybe three, five-year percentage point increases. So something that just, so that we're not going through the whole process every time.
So the fee will go up in 2027? Or is it eat what you kill in 2020?
Yeah, it would, it be, because, yeah, I mean, i- if we're looking at a six to eight-month coastal management plan rewrite, because it takes a long time because it's a natural resource code. And so the states involved, it's really the states. At that point, it's the state's game, you know, they got a 90-day public comment period. So they got a three-month public comment period just to kick it off.
The interlocal agreement is more about who retains what piece and that's what we have to agree upon formally in which they, they've submitted this to us. And so I feel like the response will be positive. Of course, we have to get with the county as well, but the fee, because it has to be decided on a certain time. I mean, I don't know that you couldn't go up on the fee sometime in 2026, but it probably would be cleaner to start it fresh in 2027 after we've gone through the process.
Yeah, the, the perfect track would be to get the approval by the end of August because in October, you have to print your, your beach stickers.
But there's no, there's no amount on the sticker.
No, there's no amount on the sticker, but if we're still together at that point.
Who wouldn't with a one-year working together before we sever, would, would that start with the 2027 after it's?
Yes, it'd start with 2027 beach stickers.
And then we would have one year still being operating somewhat how we are.
Yes.
And after that year, it's eat what you kill.
But the permits will still be all the same on.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Oh, everybody can still use the same.
The only way to keep your money for 2026 would be to sever it right now in a very, very kind of probably ugly situation. It'd be, yeah, I, I think if the parties are. If the parties are willing to move forward, then you move forward as three entities. And I think that's the cleanest, most most successful path forward. The other path is brutal. For everyone.
Can they listen to it? See, watch the entire council meeting, heard you, um, loud and clear.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, we met with him almost immediately after last month's meeting.
I think his predecessor kind of dropped a little bomb on everybody on her way out of the door. I got it, I got everybody worked up, so.
It's good. It's very good to work with. I think we're in the right direction.
Yeah, I think so too.
Nice when somebody's easier to work with, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Okay.
Very good. So.
So next month, we'll have something. So next month, we'll have something.
Yeah, yeah. If you guys, ba- basically you're just giving me marching orders to continue on and and I'm going to start, you know, bringing the, get, get the county involved and, you know, they've been involved, not as much as between us and the City of Corpus, but we'll definitely be reaching out to the county and try to get all three of the entities together and figure out when we can move this forward to kick things off, but we need to do it quick.
I like this direction we're going in, so.
Yeah. Okay, okay. All right, move on to item I, discuss and take action to appoint members to the Charter Review Commission. So the city council shall appoint every fourth year after approval of the Charter, Charter Review Commission of five citizens to the county. We have a couple of people that have expired terms, so we've been needing to re-up and redo the Charter Commission Board. Currently, there are five spots. We have three of the five Charter Review Commissioners asking or seeking reappointment. Charlie Zahn in place one, Jim Atwell in place two, and Michelle Lorette in place five. And then we have an additional applicant, Karen Valentine, who has applied to be on the board as well. And according to our information, all applicants seem to be qualified voters for the commission spots. So I think we can do one motion if you also desire.
This would leave one spot still unfilled.
That is correct.
And do we need it? Can four people make decisions or do we have to have the full five?
I mean, we want, we want five.
Yeah, we want.
Yeah, we're going to try to bring.
So can we re?
Are we running our ad?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're running the ad and we'll, everyone should just, let's try to work to get that next seat filled by November.
Okay. But for now, we can approve these four.
Yes, you can.
Yes, yes.
You'll just have four is just to get in a two-two.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we want the fifth.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay.
So if you guys can hit your friends up.
Try to get somebody excited.
Yeah, bring somebody over to another.
Okay.
Okay, then I'm going to make a motion to appoint members in first place Charlie Zahn, second place Jim Atwell, third place Karen Valentine, and fifth Michelle Lorette to the Charter Review Commission.
I'll second.
All right, there is a motion for a first and a second. Any further discussion? All right, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
No, she carried.
All right, item J, discuss and take action to appoint members of the Library Advisory Board. The current library board shall work as an advisory capacity to the city council in planning, development, use, regulation, operation, and maintenance of all Porter Anzis Municipal Library. The current library board has one, two, three terms that are up. And Anne Franks, Barbara Scott, and Suzanne A. Reader. And the applicants are Letitia Grounds, Barbara Scott, Rebecca Templeton.
So Anne Franks did not respond, correct? And then Suzanne Reader said not seeking reappointment.
Okay.
Also, for the alternate position, a person has not attended the last four meetings. So if you all wanted to replace the alternate position, because we do have three applicants at this time.
But no, you have three spots open. You have three spots open. You have three.
Yeah, because you have, you have Barbara, Letitia, and Rebecca.
Right.
No.
Yeah, so Anne Frank's spot, be Letitia Grounds, Barbara Scott, Barbara Scott, and then Suzanne Reader would be Rebecca Templeton with those three. Get there and then.
Yeah.
Unless she would want to make someone an alternate and leave a seat open, I guess you could do that, but.
Nominate my wife.
She will hurt you.
Okay, well, there, if, so yes, there are three applicants. There are three spots. Only one person is seeking reappointment, Barbara Scott, who has applied. So y'all can make one motion or someone can make two separate motions. Okay, so.
I'll make a motion to appoint members to the Lib- Library Advisory Board. Letitia Grounds played spot three, Barbara Scott, spot place four, and Rebecca Templeton, place five.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
We really enjoy having the kids at the water.
Thank you very much. I really appreciate that.
And I will get back with you on that video.
Okay.
And also if a council member would like to participate in recording just a real short video of what it is to be a council member, we got a new collection of books that talk about, you know, being active in your community. So if anybody wants to record that, come see me.
Hey Fran, how about for next month's special department head speaker, Stephanie?
It's time for Stephanie to come back. It's not the summer. It has.
So you're up, you're up in November. All right.
Bring cutesy videos.
We like those. And you have a new employee, don't you? Didn't you have, yeah? Oh, good, oh, good.
Mom is the new library program coordinator. Denise is our new library clerk.
Denise Martin.
Yep, yes.
I, yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we actually need to vote on the motion in the second. Sorry, we got distracted by that wonderful discussion. Thank you very much, Stephanie. All right, can we? Fran, please call the roll.
There you go.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Friger?
Yes.
Councilor Schmider?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, Stephanie. Look forward to next month, yes. All right, item K, presentation by Broaddus and Associates and Del Sol Consulting regarding Hurricane Harvey recovery progress and project updates. Hello, Rob.
We start off by saying, uh, all these buildings, uh, they're pretty much done by Victory Building. And there's been a change in basically leadership, if you will. They realize some of these projects are going way over. There's been what's called, uh, for the military, we call it command. It's just, um, both owners have been involved. They come out here on a regular basis. They come to the meetings. The owner's wife's involved, a lot more emphasis by Victory getting things done and a lot more activity. So that's been very good. Uh, things are moving better. And with that note also, um, I see the sites every day and I'm not authorized to tell anybody what to do, how to do it. But, um, I've noticed that some of the sites are getting unsightly, um, unkept, very neat. Uh, Dave and I went around last week and we were both just like, this is unacceptable. So I fired off an email and, um, said they had it, had it fixed by next, by last Friday and they did. They cut the grass, garbage is gone. Um, so I will make sure that they keep these sites presentable and organized. Um, because the other sites are fine, the other companies, so they can do it too. Part of the problem is, um, the Public Works doesn't have a laydown area. So all this stuff at Public Works is being at the fire station. The thing still be neat about it, you know? So we're on top of that and hopefully you'll see neater things and keeping the roads clean from the mud and all that too. All right, so moving on to the public safety building, uh, the big thing there is, um, the force. Uh, it's been going on for a few weeks. Most, the city side, they put a second coat of clear on it, um, epoxy on it and it looks pretty good. They sent it down rough areas. That's pretty much acceptable. But it's not officially acceptable, but it, it, it looks good. Problem is the county side. Uh, when they started doing it, they laid the epoxy down in the flakes and for some odd reason, the stuff took it upon themselves to start cutting expansion grooves in it, uh, which is not to spec. So when they went back to repair those expansion grooves to make it, the flake look proper, it doesn't look right. And they, they're still trying to fix it and the owner's been out there a couple of times. So, um, Victory has told them it's still not acceptable. So they have to fix those areas where they decided to cut. Um, so that will be done. And that's up to the flooring. So, uh, the next big thing is, uh, the millwork in the courtroom is going to start next week. Courtroom's been done for months, but there's no millwork in there. There's been some changes.
The millwork is like the judge's bench.
And the wall behind it and, basically it's just a roof. It's been that way for a while. So it's about to get finished with millwork starting next week. Saw the judge today. Okay, moving on to the gas building. A couple of minor changes in the gas building is going along fine. There's one shower in there. They had to make it a different size and tile work is going on with that shower. They got that figured out. Working with AEP to get this transformer pad change done. You know, just minor stuff that comes up, uh, is being done. Um, and also next week, the interior and exterior doors are going to go up so they can be, they can close the building up and really get after it. Um, so that built gas building is going good. Okay, the fire station, I mentioned the last meeting that, you know, we had the, the problem with the beams and all sixteen beams were strengthened on the bottom with some steel and welds every four inches. And the second part and the last part is actually leveling the floor. And there's a product that the structural engineer put out, saying you got to use this product. They got a couple of quotes from two different companies. One company was twice as much as the other. So, um, they had the lower company come out today, had a meeting with the people and they're this leveling agent that basically takes a two-inch dip out. I forget what it's called. But it's, it's heavy and all that. So they had a big meeting and, and that work, it takes about seven to ten days to make that floor flat. So that work is going to start on the twenty-seventh for about seven or ten days, you know, weather permitting, then the fix will be done. Also, they're continuing on a second floor block. You see the second floor going up, the north end, they're going to close that in. So the second floor is almost done with block. Uh, and they're going to start blocking around the generator like they did the PSP. You see the generator just sitting out there, but it's going to have block around it just like the PSP. Okay, the gas system, as y'all might know, last Thursday, um, about nine-thirty, y'all might have got a few calls. Uh, last Thursday, nine-thirty, they finally got that permit we talked about last time, I believe, going over three sixty-one's estate permits, a big deal, took months to get that thing done. So they started going under three sixty-one, they hit the old main and, um, they were still active. And it knocked out service to about thirty customers. Mostly were commercial, uh, customers. And Equix, you know, quickly got a list from the gas department, Gloria or somebody, might have been. Gloria and, uh, got the list of the people and, uh, they had the main fixed. Like I said, they hit it at nine-thirty. They had it fixed about, uh, twelve forty-five and by two o'clock, all of the commercial customers were relit. And they started doing the residential customers. Most of them are, are done, but all, all the ones that are here are done. But, you know, some of the people aren't here. And they, they have notified, uh, they let them on Monday and there's a few, a handful residential customers that are not lit because they haven't been here.
Haven't been here.
And they know and there's a notification when they come to town, Equix will relight them. It's all Equix.
And then just if you, so anyone, just have them call Gloria in the middle of the, you know, during working out.
I text.
Or there's an off, uh, yeah, there's an after hours.
On their door?
Yes.
Okay. So when you told me I had a customer that called me, it was after five o'clock and she was panicked because she didn't get home, didn't know it was off. And she was leaving town early the next morning. But I will tell you, they came from Corpus and got her back hooked up. She was very impressed, so.
Yeah, Equix was very responsive.
Yeah.
You know, like the guy in charge there, Hector, um, they're really doing a good job. I'm surprised he'll hit stuff every week here. There's definitely not more. Anyway, it was a bad thing and, uh, they got on it right away. And, um, main thing was commercial customers and a few hours would have done. But I said there's a few more and, uh, they called Gloria and already talked to Gloria and Gloria's going to call James and James is going to call Hector. And, uh, their licensed plumbers are the licensed people that nobody, you gotta be licensed to do it. They, they go out there. So, um, is there any confusion on that? So that's been handled. Um, and they're still working under the work directive, um, no issues with the paperwork and that we're still doing daily monitoring on them. And, um, they are, looks like around Thanksgiving, they're going to be winding up to make the real work. Uh, so after Thanksgiving, weather permitting, they're going to start doing what's called restoration, fixing some concrete, some gravel, some, some sod, things like that. So, um, Michael's not here, so he's not going to throw a shoe at me. By the, by the end of the year, they'll, they should be gone.
Oh, wow.
When they're permitting. That's a twenty-five-ish million dollar hurricane recovery project replacing the whole city's gas systems. That's pretty good. Okay, no question about that.
Yeah.
Are they replacing every gas meter on resident, on residential, uh, going to all the new gas meters?
Everything that was here, uh,
During the hurricane.
Hurricane.
Yeah.
The next stuff after. They're not.
So they're still doing that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So they'll, they'll do a zone.
Okay.
They do all the work in a zone and then the last thing they do is once the zone gets tested and it's good, then they go do the meter swap out.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, so they go through a neighborhood, do all the boring, all the big line stuff, get all the tees put in. And then you think they're gone, they've torn up your driveway, your yard, and then they come back about, you know, three months later and all the install on the individual main, uh, meters happens at the very end.
So the big meters replaced out in front of like the coast house.
They're different sized meters.
Yeah.
The good thing with new meters is they're, they're kind of automatic. You just got to drive by and they give you the reading. You don't have to actually go.
Well, Rob, that, although FEMA didn't pay for the, all the new ones, we, we decided to, remember you guys, we approved six, about six hundred something?
Those big buildings?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything post Harvey?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, moving on to Public Works Garage, um, they've had some, some rain, minor rain delays, but it turns into a mud pit out there. You, you driven by it, but they still clean the streets. Uh, but weather's been pretty cooperative and they're going up very quickly. I see them out there in light rain and stuff. The blocks going up quickly. And they are doing the electrical and the plumbing as they go up. So there's no issues with the public works. And pretty much we're over eighty-five million now in official payments. Not including the five million from EDA. So pending any questions?
Rob, I know I ask every month.
I know you are. I'm going to film right now. Public safety, okay, with the new people. I'm going to sneak out of here.
Because people ask me, so.
I don't want to text Michael in the middle of the night. Someone just asked me again.
So we, we finally got some new schedules with this new team that's more people working, Victory working on it. And, um, basically the public safety, their schedule says they will be done twenty-eighth January. Gas building thirteenth February. So, uh, I don't know if James is going to be drinking his coffee for the chief or not, but we'll see. It's going to be a race.
That's like just a couple of weeks. They ought to just say, we're going to do it all at twenty-eighth of January. They can make that happen. I mean, gas department looks like it's done.
That's phase one for the public safety. You know, that's so they can move in and we'll get rid of the trailers and all this stuff. And phase two is doing the parking lot out front. That's, that's not including phase two. Parking lot shouldn't take too long.
Because spring break's coming.
Yes.
We really need them to be all done.
The jailers will be working.
We just, but, but we need chief and everyone to be solid in there, so. Okay.
Okay, so twenty-eighth January, it'll be thirteenth February gas building, eighteen March is what Victory says on their new schedule. Eighteen March for the fire station. Um, already talked about the gas and the public works, their own schedule, their schedule says mid-June.
What's mid-June?
The public works building.
Public works building. So pending any questions? Please, my brief.
Thank you for getting on them about cleaning up. It's just even what they've done right across at the public safety building looks a whole lot better because it was least, thank you, yeah.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Y'all done, y'all doing a great job.
Thanks, Rob.
Thank you for all your community support as well. Always. Okay. Next time Jake gets to talk. Bye, guys. See you later. All right, item L, discussion on traffic control at Twelfth Street intersection.
Who put this on?
Yeah.
I did.
Okay.
So I was supposed to have some, um, parents here that we're going to discuss because I, you know, um, and between, I don't know, sports and sickness, they weren't able to come. Oh, that's nice. So I, I was going to table this, but I just want to talk about it because I had about four families that have kids on Twelfth Street. So I guess on Twelfth Street itself, there's no stop signs. And in the morning, they say that people fly down there, I mean, heading to school or heading to work and kids on their bicycle and, some parents are concerned about either having a police presence there or putting a stop sign somewhere or yield sign, splashy sign, but it's right there. I only visited with Nicole briefly texting each other on this subject, but like I said, I wish.
The four parents.
See, it's got to be right there by Janice's house.
That's right there.
Well, we, we did receive a, there was, yes, we all got an email. You should have gotten your email that from one concerned citizen from Ms. Drummond about her concerns about, yes, about Twelfth and C, which is real close to where she lives. And there are a lot of young families with young children and I'm certain they are right. I'm certain they are riding their bikes and trying to get down the street, so.
Before I got here. So I, there's another concerned parent that was gonna send an email, but I think she's also unavailable right now. So there were three for sure and they were all gonna be here tonight, but I guess there was conflict. So I, I don't know what we can do, but I would hate to see a child that, you know, got injured. I sat there one morning and I, I watched as, you know, cars flew by and kids on their bicycle and then they get nervous and one little kid like fell off the bicycle and I was over there going, oh man, I see what we're seeing here. So um, like I said, I don't know what can be done.
And it's not just twelfth. I mean, if you look at the map, so that section of twelfth from C to G, C to G is right at eleven hundred feet. But it, but if you look at all the streets around there, like I'm gonna go up to this chunk, this, this chunk of eleventh street right here, that's a thousand. This chunk on Lantana, up to that stop sign, that's eleven hundred. This chunk on Trojan from G down to C, it's thirteen hundred. That that eleven hundred foot stretch on twelfth street, every street in the city is the same.
It is.
So I mean, to just isolate that street, I mean, that's no different than what you're seeing on Trojan, what you see on Lantana, what you see on Whispering Sand.
Eleven street.
Eleven.
Mission Street and Shibuti Sands where the bus stops.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's.
It's just people need to slow down.
Yeah, I mean.
In the morning, the six street. What is the speed limit on, well?
It's thirty.
Yeah, everywhere.
Even on twelfth?
Everywhere's thirty except for.
I mean, that's not very commercial like.
Right. I mean, it is all residential.
It, I mean, twelfth, i- it is a, it's, it's more than just a neighborhood street. It's, it's like a small arterial because people in the know cut through over to get to Lantana, uh, you know, or to get to C. So it's, it's more of a, it is a, it is a higher level of street per se.
Right.
But it's very similar to
All the other street.
All the others.
If we did something for that street, we'd have to do it all.
Well, yeah, I mean, it's, it's like, it's, 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 it's not the only street.
Right, right. It's just, you know, like when you go down station and there's several stop signs.
Yeah, station.
Station is a bigger, I know that's more commercial and there, there are houses there, but anyway, okay. Well, I just said that.
But it's mainly something that, you know, chief, chief could, is chief over there?
He's hiding.
You know, it's, it's.
Well, and I know there's quite a lot of street.
You know?
Yeah.
I, they, they've helped out on Lantana a bunch because about two months ago, the uh, they were kinda hiding out on Lantana. Because you get a lot of dunes, people just ripping up Lantana. Um, so the, the biggest thing is, you know, if we got hotspots is to get chief to help us out with them and see if he can.
And it's, she said it's mainly in the morning when the kids are riding their bike to go to school. And there's quite a few. I watched a, I mean, I saw about eight kids on their bikes, you know, coming around that, under their bicycle. And anyway, I just told her, I, I told these parents that I would bring it up if there was.
And it's something I can work with chief on and see if we can get some presents down there and and uh.
They were just concerned citizens, so.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. I told them we'd have a discussion even though they weren't gonna be here and though, of course, that helps to keep communication open. Thank you for listening.
So David, you're gonna?
I'm gonna get with chief and see what we can do as far as um, get a little presence down there and see if we can figure out if there's a, a pattern to it.
Yep.
Okay, that'd be great. That'd be great if we can just
Yeah.
Pay some attention to that area. I know in the morning when kids are going to school, that's also when your officers are patrolling the school zone. So it makes it a little difficult to move officers, you know, from the school zone over to neighborhoods, but right.
We have commuter traffic coming in on the highway.
Sure.
We've got school zones going on at the same time.
Yep.
That spreads us a little thin.
Right.
But I mean, we can, anytime anybody has a concern about stuff in their neighborhood, just give us a call. We can, we can do some things to, to go and analyze the area and see if it needs, you know, extra attention.
Okay.
Can let those.
And I think that's, I think that's what they're asking. I mean, they, they, yeah, if we can do that and see what we can do, absolutely, yeah. That's important. Okay, thank you. Thank you, David. Thank you, Tanya, for bringing that up. All right, item M, discussion, possible action to approve newly revised Port Aransas volunteer fire department bylaws. Mr. James.
Adam and Vic.
Oh, and Adam.
Adam, chief's here.
Hey, chief's here too, y'all both. It's a two man show.
Special today.
That's a great idea as to how to stop speeding that.
Okay.
Yeah, Adam and, Adam and Vic consider.
Anything about a black Jeep.
Dave, Dave like.
Oh.
Are you one of the perpetrators?
No, he's only running down that street at five AM, yeah.
Twelve three once for a while.
Yeah.
I'm not saying it's me or any.
Oh.
I haven't seen any kid, I haven't knocked any kids off of bicycles.
Didn't see you flying.
That's kids on the evening.
Okay. Bylaws periodically supposed to be every about five years or so, sometimes it's longer, sometimes it's shorter. The bylaws before you have yellow highlights and what has changed since the last time that we modified them back in, looks like July of twenty twenty-three. Most of the changes, I'll get to the easy parts first. Most of them are, are um cleanup things. We added a clause for discrimination for the city of Port Aransas um HR rules. We added some definitions and we cleaned up a lot of text. Um, I'll get to the main part of it, which is recruit probation and officers and elections. I'll come back to that in a minute. A lot of it is also uh, right, taking a look at attendance, just cleaning some of that up. We uh added a second for removal of officers and business officers and at the very end, you know, you could read through all of it. We added a a section on volunteer firefighter fund because after all these years, we had, you know, we always been voting pretty much on where we're gonna spend our internal slush fund, but was never actually in the bylaws. So whenever someone say, well, you're supposed to vote in that role technically, we don't have to, but we never actually had it in there. The main items with, that really are the main part of these changes are in, first of all, we increased probation from ninety to a hundred and eighty days. That's just to give us a lot of more, a little more time to see how someone's gonna do. And that's also because uh, even though technically our call volume is about the same or a little more than past ten years or twenty years, uh, it's the kind of call that is the difference. Most of the calls are actually EMS related now and we have very few actual fires. So these people don't get the same amount of experience in the short term that we used to get. We even have fewer brush fires and fewer pole fires. Um, the second part of this is related to who's eligible to be a captain or assistant chief or a chief. The bylaws in the past had no regulations until twenty twenty-three when we added, you must live in the seven eight three seven three zip code because we wanted our people, our officers to live in this town. If nothing else, response time from out, from living from off the island wasn't good and we wanted the people to be here as much as possible. Uh, then the second part of that, that there was nothing past that, that you could actually finish your ninety days of probation and you could run for any position you want to regardless if you had a lot of experience or zero experience or been in a department before and not been in a department before. And it's a vote. So it's not something, a structured, full-time paid fire department where you're gonna go through a promotion path, or if you're gonna become a, a fire chief, you're probably gonna be bought in from the outside. So you don't have any previous relationship issues. So the eligibility for article three, section four is the main corrupt of the changes here. A, section four A, to be eligible to run for a captive position, you must be an active voted in firefighter for minimum of eighteen consecutive months. We made that eighteen on purpose because if you just finished six months of probation, then we don't want to say you have to be here two years. You make it eighteen months and you've been here two years. To be eligible to run for the position of assistant chief, you must serve as a captain for a minimal, minimum of two full years or have been an active firefighter for the previous four consecutive years. So we figure if you've been in, been active for four years, you should have what it takes to be an assistant chief experience wise. C, to be eligible to run for the position of chief, you must serve as, as assistant chief for a minimum of two full terms. And that's because of the, the fire chief has a lot more duties than just firefighting. Um, if you have any questions before we move on to anything else, now's the time for section four.
Did you bring up something where it says eighteen consecutive months in the Port Aransas volunteer fire department as opposed to somebody that might have twenty years somewhere else? Do you give time served coming in or you wanna put something in there that says in the Port Aransas volunteer fire?
I think there is something that affects it. You must be voted in. You must be a voted in member for a minimum of eighteen months. And I have to find where that exact text is.
It does say that, active voted in firefighter.
Active voted in, yeah.
Yeah.
That's right. That is Port Aransas.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what that means.
Correct.
Okay, that's correct. All right.
Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, cause under definitions, it says member is a voted in member, so.
Yeah, that'd be very, very first, so it's very first page. Section one, article two, section one definitions.
I do have one question.
Okay.
So under um, the chief part, B, I'm going backwards a little bit, but um, you've marked out and the ladies' fire auxiliary, are y'all phasing that out?
I think so.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
Find anybody at all.
To do it, okay. Right. Okay, I was just curious.
Try to get them back in.
Yeah. Volunteer. It's a lot of work, but.
Yes. And they're tired.
They're tired. They're tired of y'all.
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that you won't have people in the, in the future that won't wanna support the fire department. And there are other groups that do, right? But you don't have to have that specific organization named to support you. Yeah.
Good.
Yeah.
Okay. That's it for me.
I still have ladies in the spirit of praying. She still call, we need longer delay, they will come up.
How many, how many members do y'all have?
Technically it's twenty-nine. I think it's twenty-nine at the moment, I think.
Okay, how many of them are this zip code?
Uh, yeah, all of them. And not all of them live in the same zip code. Three of them are members of EMS that are, are in the department to help when needed. They can actually help within the department or not. I'm not gonna turn them down, but the, to say live off, I work here and live off the island, that they don't have a seventy-three seventy zip code, but officers are, that would be to recommend an officer, not just to be a member of the fire department. As long as you work here four day, was it twenty hours a week, thirty hours a week? It's something, it's something thirty hours a week. Or you live here. Um, then you could be a member of the fire department. And that actually worked out pretty well because we had a guys, we had Jim Cooper lived in Ingleside for years. He worked here every day and made a lot of daytime calls during the week while I was at work at Corpus. And he'd go home the weekend, or he came up here any day and I would be here at nights and in the weekend. So that split used to work.
I've seen your team work before. You guys are, you're good.
Thank you very much.
Know what you do.
No limit, right?
No, wait, there's, I don't think, you don't have a limit. Uh, I mean, there's definitely a limit and active and good. Because, because you're gonna have a certain amount of people that I'm gonna call us older people who um, uh, as the years go by, they have most of the experience, but they're probably not gonna show up on the subject that's actually on fire. They're not EMS people. A lot of the younger people are drifting faster in the EMS than actually going to fire training because it's very difficult to get any reasonable certification for fires. It's four hundred, it's five hundred and forty hours to be cut, to get any, to be certified as a firefighter now. When I started in the mid-eighties, uh, I think I went to Texas A and M for one week and I was certified and I had forgotten all about it for thirty-seven years until I found it, found my records for me and Pete. Nowadays, it's five hundred and forty hours and people have to leave work. They have to do best stuff online. They have to go to classes and there's no difference between the SFFMA, which is for volunteers and tech, uh, TCFP, which is for the professional firefighters, not the industrial. It's five hundred and forty hours and it costs is about, Corpus is about thirty-eight hundred dollars. And Texas, uh, Texas, Texas is approximately forty-eight hundred dollars. And it's a serious time commitment. So our end house training is is where most of our people get our training nowadays. We have one guy that's going into Corpus right now, uh, that's Jeremy, uh, Jeremy Westcott. And that's a compressed course over six weeks, I think, or two months, five hundred and forty hours. Just so it takes a lot of his time and rest of us mostly have their own separate careers as a volunteer department. So we do what we do. We have our own internal training and fortunately we have a lot of issues that are not ours. We don't have train tracks. We're gonna have a refinery in town. So we have a few breaks.
Well, it looks like you're doing a good job and improving your systems. So that's good. We'll be excited when y'all get to move in, March eighteenth. Y'all believe that?
Now, it's because of what you wished for. The last time you moved on Old Bay and New Bay, it took two months. That's a lot of stuff. It's worse than cleaning out your garage.
It is. Well, y'all, y'all do a great job and, and I appreciate um, what you and EMS both did. And I know it was a whole first responder national night out, but it was great. Y'all were all there and, and made great presentations. And I know Benton, you and your fire truck rides were the big hit, the ladder rides. I mean, oh my gosh, I know. Yeah.
That is a big hit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think I need to reschedule that so that trucks offer maintenance on that day.
I think maybe you should just do that as a separate event or something. No.
It is, it is fun, but it is a once a year thing, so it's okay.
Yeah, they love it. It was a big hit. All right, anybody have any questions? I think we have to vote on this for it to become one hundred percent.
I, I just have one edit.
Okay.
After the word bylaws, put personnel rules in parentheses because that mimics the ordinance wording. The ordinance refers to this as the personnel rules. So after the word bylaws, let's put personnel rules in parentheses. So it looked like that? Yes.
It's just a cheaper achieve. You said there had to be, um, Port Aransas volunteer fire department for eighteen months or two years?
Um, well, eighteen months is a voted in member. Meaning if you got, meaning after a hundred and eighty days, if you're voted in.
Personnel room, oh, okay.
That starts and then eighteen months after that has the voted in member. So really it's two year cycle and the day that you get out of high school, you're joining five year.
A shot that you had like a twenty year veteran of working, paid fire every single day of the week and they can't get you have to wait, you would have to wait two years versus
Yes.
Somebody that's been there for two years and
Right.
Ran hard, you get fired on the week that you've been.
And that's still an issue. I mean, because in the past, uh, uh, it wasn't till the past three years, we started finally getting a bunch of young guys and it if we had enough guys to run for an officer, they were probably all been there ten, ten, ten years or so. All the way since now, I think you can remember back in the eighties, who was wanting to be captain, but it's a new problem. And then it's, but we're still taking what we can get because my position is you should have been a fire, like I've been in the fire department maybe five years before being a captain. We're not even getting that lucky anymore. And after about, we figured about three or four years from now, when I'm sixty-five, sixty-six, and the rest of them are, are um, probably kicked out because the medical people starting to have a heart attack driving a truck or something. We want those guys to be ready, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one thing we run into the, you know, like I say, they're, they're just like we were. They, they're in a big rush. And there's, there's only so, so fast you can move uh, without tripping over yourself. And that's what.
I think it's a great idea to stare at the ones that are volunteering for the first time, don't have any experience. I think that you should have a little people there for somebody that's had fifteen, twenty, twenty-five years experience and then they can come in and help train. But ultimately, they're gonna have to spend two years on the bench and nothing until they can be out of captain position, be able to train.
That is true, but also it's also a thing. We want them to be a part of our community for a few years too. Um, that there's nothing to stop the chief. It's written in here that he can delegate whatever duties he wants to whoever he feels can handle them or whatever has to happen. So that's in there. He has that option. It's one of his, that's uh, one of the things he could do anytime. And that's happened in the past too. And the other thing is you're gonna notice that there's a lot of people, there's gonna be X amount of people in our department after December that are not captains, that have been around fifteen or two, uh, fifteen years or that general range, that are not captains that are gonna get assignments whether they want it or not, because if we have a fire, they're the first guys to show up. They're gonna be the ones driving the trucks and running the pumps. So the point is to, well, I've talked enough and. The point is to, well, I talked enough and.
You gotta have systems and that's what you're doing. You're establishing systems and personnel and protocol and, and that way people know what to expect and how it works, so.
You guys do a great job. We appreciate you.
Okay. Okay, we are doing approval subject to the word edition from Mr. Parsons.
I will, I will motion to approve the newly revised Port Aransas Volunteer Fire Department bylaws with the addition of personnel rules. After bylaws on the title page.
I'll second.
All right, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilor Schamitis?
Yes.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Yes.
Item N resolution authorizing the purchase of a maintenance agreement and security management services for the public. Safety radio system from Daily Wells Communications, funding from fiscal year twenty twenty to twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. General Fund fifty, capital outlay account five nine three zero zero and a total amount of fifty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents. And authorizing city manager to act as executive officer and authorize representative of the city in all matters pertaining to said agreement. We won't have to do this after next meeting, right?
This is budgeted, isn't it?
Yes. This is budgeted.
But I mean, once we get past the. Fifty thousand rule, we're done, right? After this?
Tonight, the third reading?
Second. After next month. Okay, sorry. It's all right, chief. We love to see your face.
This is the security agreement and maintenance agreement. Last year, uh, we diverted a, the original amount that we had on that was a hundred and twenty-five thousand. Dollars. And if you remember, we were able to negotiate one more free year and got the price down because we did it as part of the region. System and got that price down from a hundred and twenty-five thousand down to fifty. Fifty-two, fifty-three thousand, whatever the, the number is there for me, uh, that. But because we negotiated that one, we're trying to get it done as soon as we can at the beginning of the fiscal year so that we can keep everybody's. Software up to the same level of security. And that's basically what that, that is tonight.
Any questions? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution authorizing the purchase of the maintenance and security agreement for the total amount of fifty-two thousand. Four hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-three cents.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll.
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Pogger?
Yes.
Councilor Schamitis?
Yes.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, sir. Item O, resolution authorizing the sale and or disposal of surplus property, which is a no longer needed for public use. Authorizing the sale of the surplus property by auction or as determined to be the best option by staff. Items to be sold as is and authorizing the city the right to accept or reject any bids submitted. Darla?
Who is it? Darla Fran? Who is this?
Who's in charge?
There's not much here.
Darla and Fran. Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
Here makes a dream work is the generator that was right behind. And to be able to auction that off as soon as possible. So that's one thing that's on there. None of these.
That we need to auction through.
Run a small town.
The vehicles, all four of the vehicles have to go through this enterprise.
And then out of the Umax.
Three of them. The Umax Yamaha, the two, well, the one, sorry, there's a four vehicle dump track. That one, it wouldn't even go either. So they don't.
Yeah, okay.
So all of this will go on our public surplus website. And it will be auctioned at ourselves.
Hmm, buy the generator.
Kind of big.
Very big. Where are you putting it? Think he's just partial.
Sell, sell power back to the city?
Yeah.
It saved us after Harvey.
That's good.
Okay, do I have any questions? Is there a motion?
The motion to. Resolution to authorize the sale in or disposal of surplus property.
I'll second. All right.
Any other discussion? Fran, please call the roll.
Councilor Schamitis?
Yes.
Councilor Cogger?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, item P, resolution adopting amendment to the twenty twenty-five fee schedule approving amendments to the building and development fees. And providing for severance and set an effective date.
So my background information pretty much spells out, um, the request for this. Um, there are definitely some projects that don't require a lot of hands-on city time. But because the only way we were charging for them was based on their value, things like walkovers that could be five hundred thousand dollars were very expensive for very little. Um, input from us. So we decided to come up with a fair price for that, which is about a five hundred dollar, uh, permit fee for June walkovers. And then there's other things like roofs, windows, doors, that we don't really have to inspect very thoroughly. It's done by, uh, windstorm engineer. And so instead of charging those based on values, because those windows and doors can be very expensive. Uh, we think it's appropriate to charge just based on the one inspection that we do. So we've asked that to be reduced down to seventy-five dollars. And that's it.
I'm motion to approve resolution adopting amendment to the twenty twenty-five fee schedule approving amendments to the building and development fees and providing for severance and setting effective date.
I'll second. All right, any further discussion?
Hearing none, Fran, please call the roll. Yes.
Councilor Schamitis?
Yes.
Councilor Chambers?
Yes.
Councilor Christensen?
Yes.
Mayor Crawford?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Motion carried.
All right, we're going to move on to item Q, which is a resolution temporarily changing the regular. Meeting place of the city council chamber meetings. This still looks pretty good, but I understand it might get a little iffy later. So what is our thoughts?
We spoke with Manny earlier and he's thinking April, but could be January, just depending on.
Yeah, it just depends on how quick they're moving, but right, right now we're good. So with this temporary wall, they can do everything on that side. Steel, get the roof system put in, get walls put in, and then really, probably until it's. Conditioned, they don't even break into this. So it could be, we might have good use of this for a while.
Body's good. The video's good.
Yeah.
But so.
And then some backup ideas would be, you know, when the time comes. Uh, we could go upstairs at the harbor. We could go community center. Maybe, maybe courtroom.
We can get a temporary seat though.
Yeah, so, so we have options to move, but right now we're good.
Okay.
So we can bring this back later.
Yeah, we, I don't mean.
Well, I just don't want something, uh, my fear is that something happens. Between now and next month or now and December's meeting and we don't have a place to move to and we haven't decided or elected to do that. So. I think we need to go ahead and identify multiple locations so that we're prepared in case something does happen.
And Peggy has been looking at, looking at how to do the audio and the different spots.
Um, I mean, my only other thought was to contact the school because they are set up one hundred percent to have the exact same meeting we have. And if we could go and meet there, if it wasn't a conflicting night, I mean, audio, visual, everything would be there, seating, et cetera. We wouldn't have to be trying to set up the harbor master's office or the community center that's not done or, you know, something like that. Of course. The courtroom, I'm sure will be equipped and ready for all that if it were ready, but I just have a concern that something does happen.
Let us reach out to Sharon and.
And just make that an option.
Yeah.
Okay. And then, yeah, maybe next month, we're all good and then we have several places that we kind of identify.
Okay.
That's why she was calling you.
Yeah, no, maybe, yeah. Okay, so we don't have to make, we're, we're not making this on this resolution today. Okay. All right. Okay.
Till we kind of know where we're going, maybe?
All right. So item seven, city manager report.
Okay, so the non FEMA projects update, um, civic center, city hall renovations. Uh, it's going really great. I think, um, we got on the admin side, we already got steel up. And the corrugated roof system. Um, that wraps around the backside of the admin, you know, behind Nicole's office and the. You know, where the, uh, building department will be expanding. And then out here in the, uh, excuse me, the courtyard where the, um, where the caterers kitchen is expanding, that has steel too. Uh, slab is finished on this side. So all the slab work's done. They should be erecting steel here within the next two weeks on this side. Uh, so making good progress on all fronts. The, they have started demo in the lobby. So that's moving forward. They got all the. They jackhammered for what, two days to get all that Salteo tile up? So it's gone.
That was fun.
Um, so that's gone. They were able to get in on Monday, the twenty-ninth into the civic center and they started day one. And it's, and they, you can see the picture there to the right. The whole, uh, ceiling system is down. Um, so they've been making really good progress, um, in the, in the civic center also. So, uh, everything's looking really good on that.
Those two pictures in the paper looked really good.
Yeah. Uh, streetscape project, again, that's kind of just a placeholder there. That's, uh, pending the venue election. Um, the city has been running an ad in the paper and it has a QR code. Um, thanks to Fran and her team, uh, help from some chamber, but they got that set up. It's really neat. So you can. Hit the QR code in the ad.
These are some handouts if you don't have them.
And then it takes you to a webpage that has about what, sixteen slides on it? So it's all, all informational, really good, good stuff on there. So if anyone, if you guys want to direct anyone to, if they want to find out what it's about. You can just have them hit that QR code and, um. Take them to the, the, the QR webpage. That's really neat. Um, tomorrow, the mayor's doing a webcast.
Yes.
At one o'clock, just for informational purposes.
Informational webcast at one o'clock. And then I think, what, what did they do today?
The, the today's was regarding the school.
Oh, that was the school. Okay.
Did they?
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, November fourth, uh, goes to the voters.
Early voting.
Uh, community center renovations, uh.
They done?
No. Not done, but looking good. Uh, Colleen, uh, we got a, they have a new project manager over there who's, uh, we think has made good progress in the. Last month that he's taken over. Yeah, a lot of action. Uh, most of the hardy siding's finished. Roof system's finished. The front deck has been, uh, pulled out. Leveled, all new boards. It looks really good. I walked it today. Yeah, restroom, the exterior restroom's up. That's that little picture on the right-hand side there. That's the men's and women's restroom. So they're making good progress on that. The roof system, roofers are coming out to get that finished. Uh, interior repairs are continuing. They've spray foamed the insulation on the inside and still doing, um. Doing ceiling preparation. Um, so they are making a really good progress over there. So. It's improved greatly in the last month. Robert's Point Bulkhead Collapse, the Bulkhead, uh, wall and rock revetment are completed. The engineer designed phase two, the sidewalk and the cap repairs. Um, it went out to the original contractor. We tried to work it in as a change order, but it came back. Way too expensive. So we said, oh, the heck with it. We'll try to farm it out to someone else. So we're pushing that project out. We're going to. Just send it out and see if we can get it to come in under fifty, but can't come in under fifty, then we got to go out to competitive bid unless we. Hold off a month and then. It'll come in. So that one's still kind of pending. Um, beach access road B, I drove. I drove the road today. It was, uh, very, very. Making great progress. So they've tied into the highway. Um, they have the concrete all the way to the beach, but they are going to adjust. I don't know if, if you've looked at it from the beach side, but they're going to cut about seventy feet off and readjust it. Because it came, it traversed too far out onto the beach. So they're, they're adjusting that last seventy feet. But it's still very, still very drivable, even though they'll steepen it up a little bit. It's still, I think it's a great, uh. It's a great profile that really prevents the beach from turning into a overwash. You know, in case of a storm, they really kept the profile high through the dunes, which is a good thing.
Was the engineer putting it out there that far or did the contractors just?
The engineer put it out there that far and he's going to make the fix.
Okay.
Good.
Yeah. Uh, they have not done the turn lane. Uh, when I was out there today, they were working on the. I think it's an eight-foot hike and bike on the south side. That's that picture on the lower left. Um, but it's, it drives really great. So I think it's going to end up being a really good beach road. Uh, we are still working with Tech Dot regarding traffic signalization, not promising anything. It takes a while. But we are, you know, working with Tech Dot on how they want to properly sign it. Um. And get, you know, get the turn lane all situated and, and get the signage up, so.
David, what's the timeframe on completion, do you think?
Um. They said about three weeks to start construction of that turn lane off the highway. I'm not sure how long that'll take. And then the readjustment of the, of the, um, terminus onto the beach, but I mean, we're getting really close. Yeah.
Okay, maybe the end of the year.
Yeah, yeah, I think within a couple of months, we're going to be finished. Yeah. Uh, Charlie's pasture bulkhead park. I was hoping to get something to you guys this meeting, but I, sorry, didn't. Didn't get it finished. So get it to you guys at the November twentieth council meeting. Lifeguard building still awaiting. Uh, the fire and EMS lay down yard to clear. Until that clears, we just, we don't have any space. So. We're using that area as the lay down yard for public works and for, um, EMS fire. So we just, you know, need, need dirt. Uh, traffic light at station in G, contracts are signed. Uh, notice to proceed has been given and like the, the gentleman said, when we awarded it, the first. Four months is ordering all the parts and then the installation goes in right at the end. So. You know, installation will be, you know, first, first part of twenty-six. Uh, rec center, I don't know if you've been out to the rec center, but wow, you talk about a lot of dirt. It's about, it's, it's as tall as me. You can't really see it in the pictures. I tried to capture it in the, in the one picture to the top right. But it's probably about five and a half feet above that rate of the, the grade of the road there. So it's really. But we have to be at eleven feet.
Are they just retaining wall that or how are they gonna?
Um, no, that, that road gets reworked. Um. So the, the building itself has kind of built in retaining walls. So it drops down. Yeah, yeah. So it drops, most of it's, most of the height's captured just in the, in the walls of the building. And then the parking lot kind of steps up as it, as it's at the lower, the outermost parking lot towards Ross is lower. Then it steps up to the next tier as you get closer to the building. So everything kind of tiers up to the building. Um, until you get within ADA range of some ramps, but, um.
Well, I guess it's the, what they're using is a little different than sand too.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's select fill, right? Yeah, it's all select fill. Yeah, five feet of select fill.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Uh, they have started the grading of the parking lot areas out front. That's that, um. Lower, lower left picture, that's the parking lots. Um. Because there, okay. Before I forget, groundbreaking date. Of course, we, we had to delay the groundbreaking. The Clark family is requested, um, next week. They would like to move forward with it as soon as we can. And they would like to shoot for, um, Thursday, the twenty-third is their. Preferred date. So could you guys check your calendars? How's that look? Thursday, the, Thursday, the twenty-third.
I'm at three o'clock.
Um, I, I, I could, we could play with times, but. That happened, it happens to be their dad's birthday. That's that, that's Robert Clark. The thirds or the seniors birthday date. They'd like to, the rec, the request came through that. Possibly do it on the twenty-third.
I, I know that next week, the chamber has a huge conference in town. That's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Do what? And I, it'd be probably better for the afternoon than the morning, correct? Yes. Okay, thank you, Colleen. Yeah, because obviously it's a ribbon cutting groundbreaking, you know, event, if you will, that we would want them there as well.
About two o'clock.
So, yeah, I think it's something.
Two or three.
Two or three, probably be better.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Yeah, four.
Yeah.
Four?
Yeah.
Yeah, we could have kids.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Of course, I think that'd be great. Marlin Academy, line them up.
Do we need to bring your own shovel?
No, well, no, everything will be provided.
I'll get some plastic shovels.
Put it in my calendar right now. Twenty-third.
Twenty-third, four o'clock.
Hopefully that's a good day for the contractor and the architect and everybody.
Yeah, we'll get them there.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and that's it on the non FEMA projects.
Okay, do you all have any other questions or comments? Or David? Okay, all right, we'll move on to eight, which is staff reports, and we'll start with Parks and Rec, Colleen Simpson.
Our special, special guest.
Special guest this month.
So now that summer's beyond us, we're gonna start up with the department head monthly visits.
I I almost got up at public comment just so I could say my address. So I officially live in Port A now. Sorry, nothing make it about me.
No, you've got deployments with the government shutdown. It's been a little problem for people to.
House right now.
Good, good, awesome.
Yep. Um, so I haven't talked to you since last year about our department. And is it possible to put, I put some photos to go with the report on a PowerPoint. Can you switch your screen?
No.
Okay, well, I wanna, I don't want to take too much time because there is so much that we did this year. Um, but starting off with our capital projects, we had the new playground at Robert's Point Park. Turtle Cove Playground. If you haven't been out there recently, new shade structures went up. There was a private donor and then the Port of Corpus Christi that helped fund those. Um, local contractor built some wooden ones and we have vines that are planted on them. So hopefully they'll turn into green space. Perfect. Well, maybe Fran can just scroll for me.
What is that not working?
It's not presenting on the screen. Anyways, um, so Old Town Square was completed. We have a pavilion, two shade structures. We have restrooms going up right now. Um, the rec center is broken ground. And contractors there are just super speedy and awesome. We should see parking lots being poured in the next two weeks. It's going fast. They're chomping at the bit to keep things moving. Um, at the community park, there is a um new feature called a pump track. It's like a blue plastic bowl. And it's for um bikes and skateboards and geared at kind of beginner level.
Picture of it?
It is in there.
Oh, that's the rec center.
That's the rec center. There we go. Okay, we're at, there's our little pump track. I have to expand that pad that it's on. So it's set up a little smaller than it actually is. There's a couple more pieces that we'll expand it out once we add some cement over there. Um, but the buzz around town is that they like it.
Yeah. Neighbor likes it.
Keep David off of the pump chat. We don't need any injuries. Um, next slide is the Mercer Cemetery. We gave it a little facelift. We give it a new white picket fence and a new sign. The sign was done by um straw.
Yeah, it came out really nice.
The little symbols at the top are actually the cattle brand from John Mercer. So kind of cool. It looks like anchor and I don't know, it's super cool. Um. The fishing piers, we had volunteer divers from Heart Research Institute and the Marine Science Institute. Look at those superheroes. They went down and cleared out any narrowed fishing line, old crab traps. Um, they just did a Station Street Pier today, so all three piers have been cleaned, thanks to those volunteers.
I know, he does look like a superhero.
No, that was real. Um, so then going into community programs, the programs we've offered this year, the people that we've served, I won't go into every single one, but we're well over ten thousand. So that number is attendance for Christie's Community Programs. But when you look at youth programs and nature preserve programs, um, we've had a lot of programming offered to the community. And that's not counting just, you know, visitors in the park and people enjoying our amenities. So that's
There's always somebody.
Programs that we've offered. Uh, we've got a cool fall lineup coming up. The spooky season is here. And so um there's haunted hay rides and trunk or treats rapidly approaching. Um, what else do we have? And then our winter Texans are starting to arrive. So our um like nature preserve host came back today. Um, Ken's gonna be offering drumming. We've got some painting classes, crafting, you name it. We offer it for our community members. So there's
Small dog competition?
You know, there used to be a costume contest. Um, the holidays will then follow shortly after that. We're gonna do Santa in the park out at the Marina Pavilion again. Lights on the chili field. You'll notice there are some Christmas uh decorations that were sneaking up. Uh, they're not gonna be powered on, but you'll see on roof lines, lights have started to appear.
They're on, they're on this building, but I don't know if they're gonna last.
The um installers just went for it.
I was like, well, yeah, might be, that part of the building might be gone next month.
Um, next is Marlin Academy. Our, oh, this is a special thing. I forgot. Um, so Ken and Christie developed a um professional development seminar. And they used the movie Wicked to educate on themes related to Parks and Rec. It was phenomenal. I mean, I don't mean to toot our own horn, but holy moly, it was so entertaining. It was well attended. It was the South Region Texas Recreation and Parks Society was in Portland. They had a meeting at their community center. And it was the talk of the whole conference. Greg Stunt was the keynote speaker. People were walking around with tiaras and their chat. It was, they did such a bang up. I was super, super proud of them. It was really wonderful and super creative and educational. Um, Marlin Academy going strong. We've got after school clubs, uh Theater Club is coming back. They're going to be doing uh Charlie Brown Christmas. It's their winter production. Um, so we're excited. The school's been really supportive of us in that club. They're doing fishing club. They're doing, they did line dancing club. We're trying to mimic the ACE program that the school offered and supplementing that after school enrichment activities in addition to just keeping kids safe. Um. I'm gonna skip ahead. Those are some of the revenue numbers. Uh, what do we have? Camp, super well attended. We're looking at, uh, there's been some talk about restricting who comes to camp based on if they are enrolled in P I S D. And so we're looking at who are we serving? Are we serving um employees, children during the summer? That might not be P I S D students. Are we serving community members that work in town? That need a place to bring their kid that may not live here. And so we're trying to find that balance of do we do early bird enrollment? Do we limit who's involved? And so if you have any input or if you hear any input on that, I would love to hear more. Because Parks Board is discussing.
I've had some parents with some concerns about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard, not. I never want to be exclusive.
I know.
So it's hard because everybody needs a safe place for their kids. So I'm taking input. Um.
And that's because the programs fill up and they just.
Yes, that was the concern is that I didn't get in right away. And then I saw somebody who wasn't a P I S D student and
A tourist is here with their kid in the program or something?
We looked at it and there weren't any tourists. So it's either a second homeowner or an employee in the community. Those were the ones that were not recognized as P I S D.
Got it, okay.
Yeah. Um, flip into nature preserve. They have lots of great things going on. There's a tree planting volunteer event. They had an awesome tree giveaway. This is at the um Trail Connection. The last section of trail to go from the south end of the nature preserve all the way through was finished uh behind the birding center. So they planted some stuff there. Hey, look at that.
My tree, look at that. That was last year, right?
That was the tree giveaway, but they partnered with National Night Out and gave trees away this.
Oh, I got more trees.
Event and it was really well received. Um, we've got our nature preserve yoga. This is the perfect time of year. If you like yoga, go do the nature preserve yoga right now. It's so beautiful out there. Um, fall migration is underway. Seeing all kinds of rare birds. We got staff members uh birding that have never birded before and also just lots of good stuff going on in the nature preserve. And there's their program numbers. Uh, this is the, next one is the Birding Center parking lot has been expanded. So there used to be cars that would park down Ross Avenue and you had traffic to the transfer station and uh people walking down the road. This is a much safer, nicer option, more accessible. And it looks nice. And then we added an edge to politely say, keep out. So those photographers are very ambitious and sometimes will be crawling through the habitat. And we're trying to keep them back on the manicured section so that the birds can rest and refuel and have their space. So there's a nice little flagstone edge now. Surf Rescue had a killer year, fully staffed. Did regional competition, did national competitions. They had knock on wood, no drownings. Um, rescue numbers, huge amounts of um prevention and education and serving um not only the beach, but also uh helping with EMS when they need it. So I'm super proud of their department. Oh, the jellyfish are insane this year. Yep. And so then they're going out and representing us in the states and at national levels. And so there's some cool photos there of them showing off their skills. And our pool is also doing great things. Uh, lots of attendance, revenue is up. And they did a ton of work. So new UV filters, they redid the umbrella. It was a mushroom, now it's an umbrella. Uh, they did the beach entry, they did the coping, they did the ADA handrails on the stairs. Basically, the audit that we got uh due to the rec center, when we looked at all of the amenities out there, they've knocked out as much as they possibly can um over there. So it's looking good. We demoed the shade that was kind of dilapidated out there. Um, but everybody is just working hard and I couldn't be happier. Oh, yeah, and there's a new toddler slide out there that is a big hit. I haven't actually seen it in action yet. It's so new. Um, there's staff keeping busy while the pool was closed.
Yeah.
Ooh.
Uh, there's just highlighting our uh partnerships in the community that we work with that we're so proud to be partners with.
Well, you and your team continue to do a fabulous job. So thank you very much. You do a lot under your umbrella, Ms. Colleen. So congratulations on becoming a Port Aransas. Are you ready to vote?
Are you cooking dinner tonight?
Where'd you get a house at?
Oh, you did?
Congratulations.
Oh, good job.
All right.
She'll be early to work tomorrow.
I doubt that. I doubt it. She won't know what to do with herself.
All right, I think you. All right, next, accounting finance Darla, Ms. Darla.
From the Department of Fund to the Department of Boring Finance.
Oh, numbers.
Gotta happen.
Numbers, but we're at the end of our fiscal year, which was September thirtieth. So the numbers you see in your packet are pretty much the final numbers for the year. Of course, we've got a lot of adjusting entries and more bills that'll be coming in for work that was performed in September. But our economic indicators are pretty much finished for the fiscal year and they were great. So our hotel tax for the fiscal year, we broke records. We've never had this much. We had eleven point three six nine million. Our best year prior to that was the uh fiscal year ending September twenty twenty-three at ten point five million. So we were up almost twelve percent for the fiscal year. Um, twenty-four point nine percent for the month of August stays. Sales tax, similar. It was our best year ever at two point eight million. Last year was the best prior to that. Let's start coughing. It's two point five eight million. So we were up about ten percent. The harbor, the quarterly rentals were basically flat. We were down um just about three percent. Our daily rentals were down about thirteen percent. And golf cart, um, I emailed to y'all last month after um I had Brock and Monique. Our two chief accountants kind of had to go through and add a column for each golf cart for the years to come up with this to show you what percent was business, what were local Port A residents, what were non-local. And then exempt is school district, city, UTMSI. Um, we all have plates, so you know, they're less than one percent, but they are a category, so we put that in there. So if you notice, the majority are not rental businesses. The major, majority are the non-local second home resident.
That surprises me.
And now some of these may have two, but none of them have like three or four. So, um, but we are really, we're ahead of last year. They are already made our color template. It should be here next week for us to decide. Um, we're gonna be maroon. Uh, between two different.
It's been a long. UT alumni over here don't like that.
We always pick a top five team. So it it we, so it's like mid-October, who's in the top five?
So my hook and plate is gonna be maroon.
They get the nods.
There you go.
Sorry.
We had orange, burnt orange two years ago.
Called Astros orange, but it was kind of burnt orange. We've had burnt orange twice, orange twice since we've had maroon. It's been, it's been a very long time. Can't even remember what year, but
And what did I recommend first?
You recommended orange and I went, you can't do orange. You just have to.
Did so good last year. Let's give another orange. And Darla looked at me like, really?
I said, no, we can't do oranges too soon. I said, it's been a really long time since we did maroon. So I kind of called it. We've even done green since we've done maroon.
That's true.
Um, and we can't do gold. So my green and gold is way down the list. But here, um, if this is a a satisfactory golf cart report, we will continue to do this. I know I had some council members ask for more information. I don't know what we'd really do with that. It would be a lot of work. Um, but
We're asking how many people got tickets? Is that what we're, is that we're looking for?
Always asked for it.
I bet Dale has time.
Just give him the spreadsheet.
I bet Dale has time.
Yeah, um, this is, this is great. Thank you very much. I think this ma- mainly this is what I wanted to see because it it people, I I've known this for a long time. And when you say that, people never believe you. They think that the majority of them are all, and 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 there are increases. You can see clearly, you look back to, you know, five years ago, there are dramatic increases in the number of golf carts. And and especially, you know, those that are in all categories. Not as much people that live here. Actually, that's declining. Um, which I think is an interesting fact, but um yes, I appreciate that because it's
Well, the percentage has declined, but the local plate, six hundred and two year compared to three hundred and forty-nine in two thousand eighteen, it's kind of held its own.
But you don't, you're not seeing the the jumps like you've seen in both the business and the and the non-local. Yeah.
Pretty much. So, I mean, we're we're ahead of last year, six thousand six hundred and seventy-four through September. Compared to six thousand one hundred and nine for the whole calendar year last year. We will quit selling um in November, about the third week.
But I know when I was here last Friday, I mean, there are people all day long coming in and getting plates. Weekend was crazy. Cause they were here for the weekend. I mean, it's just, yeah, that's just how, yeah.
If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
No other questions, but thank you very much, Darla. Good job.
And I can, you know, we keep this in a golf cart. It's a spreadsheet database. We have one for vanity. We have one for numbers. I can definitely email that to you that you play with.
Yeah.
Thank you, Darla.
Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
All right, mine is pretty short and sweet this year. I mean, this month. Um, we are just about on track with where we have been all year.
Um, we are just about on track with where we have been all year on year-to-date uh building permits. I put it in a graph form just to kind of show that dramatic increase from twenty-one to twenty-three. That was pretty much all COVID-related, I think. Um, code enforcement, thirty-one new cases, um, six vehicles that they've tagged, two stop work orders. They didn't issue any citations this month. Um, but our big news is all of the demos that we were working on, Beach Lodge. Uh, a very substandard trailer on White Street and Brumley have all been completed. As of today, this afternoon, uh Beach Lodge finished. The other ones look beautiful as well. So we've made some major progress.
Awesome. It's really good.
And those are really the last three that were kind of life safety issues in town. So unless you guys find some more out there to send our way, I think we're, we're good for a while. Um, and I think that we have finally kind of kicked the people putting extra brush out. And we've seen a dramatic reduction in the amount of toters that are left out. So I think that they're doing good work there, too. Uh, short-term rentals still increased. Um, last year, it uh we're about two hundred over what we were. We still have seven that are pending, that have paid and are still kind of missing some kind of information. Um, she did another fifteen inspections and no citations this month.
Good.
Just loving along.
Wow, great.
Thank you very much, Nicole.
Thank you, Nicole.
All right.
Round two, back on back, yeah. We'll make it pretty quick. Um, all pretty standard month, a hundred and four calls. So this was pretty much right on track for the last, last month or la- thi- this month last year, it's a hundred and three. Um, still climbing on on the total year-to-date, beating, beating last year's total. Uh, response time is still looking good, four minutes and eight seconds. Forty transports, bear is still being our number one. Um, I was talking to some of the people at the uh at the rack before the meeting and everything else. And there is a little bit of chatter that, that there could be some people interested in buying uh care regional and Ranses and maybe opening it back up and redoing it. And it's, it could be a long way, but there is some chatter out there that there's people looking at it. So that would be good for us because that would get us uh back in service a lot quicker. And uh we could take our stuff that that is not needed to go to Corpus over there. So that would, that would be good for us. Um, usually it's, it's all been pretty flat and you know, we haven't done near as much. Uh, Tri-County uh added an additional ambulance and they put another station in over there. So they have one in uh Ingleside and now in Aransas. So then they added another truck. And so they're really kicking up to help their call volume, but they were getting beat up pretty bad for a little while. So it's, it's, it's a great thing to see. Few highlights, uh, we did cross-country standby. They had the big race here. Um, Shattered Dreams. I did add a picture. I don't know if y'all saw it in your reports. But that's just some of the photos from the um, the students and Shattered Dreams and all the support. I, I don't, I thought I had a, a note, but I must have left it on my desk. On how many agencies? I think they had like close to fifteen agencies between, you know, Corpus and Port A and Fire and, and you know. Rockport and Aransas. I mean, everybody just came over to help Allegiant. That's the Mulash team out of Driscoll. Karen Beard kind of leads that up and she does a phenomenal job. She's been doing it forever. She actually retired last year. And uh heard we were doing it again. And so she just couldn't handle it. She had to come over and help again. So she is a great asset.
So she does all the.
She teaches all the bunch and uh between them and the rack and the Driscoll team, they really, they've built a Mulash team. So um, you know, now that COVID's gone, everything else, we're kind of ramping up Shattered Dreams again, I believe. Um. And and the rack area, I think we want to start doing two a year. And so we'll go to another school and help them during theirs. And it'll, it's just, it's a great thing. And I've heard nothing but great compliments about it and parents and I mean, people that are really taking it serious. So that was, that was a good, that was the point. Um, St. Joe's Beach Cleanup, the Powderpiller Parade, uh, and then we went to Attempts of Comforts, which I kind of addressed last time with. That's more of the advocacy on the EMS side and and fighting for bills and all that kind of stuff. So it's a great conference. And then UT at Bethany had a meet and greet, uh, some of the police officers, some people from the city all went. They did like a safety and security. They did a whole vamp on. Um, you know, meet and greet with some of their staffers and some of their students with the local law enforcement and police and EMS and, and fire. So uh it was, it was a great event. So other than that, that's kind of all I got. Any questions? All right. If there's anything else y'all want to see on some of these reports, I know they can get kind of redundant and the whole thing, but we're just kind of tracking. But if y'all want to see something or certain kind of calls or anything that you want, just holler. It's easy to pull.
Great job. I'll brag about you and the mayor's youth council next month. But y'all did a great job and it really, they really enjoyed it. So it's really good. Um, all right, Chief Stokes, you're next.
Okay, let's see here. So the September report marking the end of the summertime. Our calls were right just over two thousand calls. You kind of cut the break down there. Four hundred ninety-four, nine, one, one calls. So that's a pretty decent. Decreased than than we normally see. Um, we filed four hundred and seventy-seven charges. Uh, total sixty, sixty-three total arrests. And you'll notice a couple of these, we've, we had a cup, we had uh a couple of assault on a peace officer. Cases this, this past month. I don't know what it was, but it seemed like everybody wanted to have some kind of fight with the, with the police at the end of, at the end of the summer. But uh, we've been going through some, some defensive tactics training. We've changed up the way we've, we've been doing it. I think Dave kind of jumped in one day in the civic center and showed some, some of his techniques, yeah. To the guys. And uh, what we, what.
Everybody healthy?
Every, I, I have one. I have one that's, that's out. And that was, that was in the field injury, but. It was not. But my point to that is that our use of forces usually go up at the end of the summer. And they have declined. So the training is working. Um, the, the guys and the girls are, are really employing some of the techniques that are, that, that were, they're using. For the, not only the de-escalation, but the handling of, of people and ways to keep themselves safe and keep the offender safe. So I'm really proud of the, of the stuff that they're doing there. Um. So I've tried to keep it short for you, Dave, so.
Top three?
Yeah, well, I did four this, I did four just because we had two, two uh that were. One was kind of interesting. This driving in the dunes one, yes, is a. Something that goes from very, from a very minor deal to something that's very, very major. Um, so it, it was a. He, he, he was a character. Um. And he, he's the one that damaged the uh, the cell door. We had to actually get a locksmith out, I think, on, on that one. Yeah, that, that uh, was it him or was it one of the?
It's, no, it says that.
Pushups and.
Yeah, he was.
Really acting crazy and.
He was, yeah, if it doesn't, the narrative doesn't do it justice uh there.
Those new jail doors we get, they won't be able to do that, right?
We're hoping not. Yeah, they, the jail doors we have now are like three hundred pounds. There's, there's some, some beefy, some beefy doors. Um, this is the. It was a bar fight. The people refusing to pay their tab. Cops showed up to, you know, get them to, to pay their tab. The wanted to leave the establishment. They decided that they didn't want to leave and, and decided that they were gonna stay and. We decided that they weren't and. And it didn't work out well for them. And and of course, you know, the companion has to step in and try to interfere and stuff and ends up gets arrested as well. Um, another stolen golf cart that we had um started out as a disturbance at a bar, but. We had a report earlier in the evening of a stolen golf cart. The guys were able to recognize it. Hey, that looks familiar from, from briefing and. And we're able to find the guy and, and get him taken into, into custody as well. Um, and then this last one. Uh. It was another, another bar where they went out in the. Oh, this is where they were refusing to pay their tab. The other one was. Refusing to leave. The um, but yeah, they, this is, they, they, you can't make this stuff up. They gain in there, they, when they got in there, this is where our, my newest officer got, got kicked. Uh, female officer, she just.
She did?
Yeah, she, she was, she was the one that was assaulted in this one. Um, she just got off of her field training program. She was a dispatcher for a couple of years. Went to the academy and she was on training during that. She is now on her own this week. She got cut loose. So she's, she's happy and, and running around. So she got to, she got to uh. Get baptized with her first suicide that we had, that will be on next month's report. So. We are working on, um, I think we've talked about it in the past, the wellness program with uh. Doctor Glenn from Cedar Park. We're hoping to get that scheduled here in the next couple of, of months before the end of the year to have her come out and speak. Um, if that opportunity does present itself, I'd really like to invite the council to attend that. Uh, it gives you some really great insights. On uh, on some of the stuff that the, the guys and girls go through. I think we had a statistic that um. That are, that was presented the other day that adults, the average adult will experience four to six. Traumatic events in their lifetime. And the average first responder is like two hundred and fifty. Traumatic events. So it, it really spotlights a lot of the stuff that these officers are going through. And I guess the older I get, the more, you know, it's, it's these young, I mean, she's in her mid twenties. Doing this stuff, you know, and it's like, holy cow, they're having to deal with this. And then you for, you forget that, you know, we were all once there and it, but it's a different time. But they're, they're doing really good. I'm really proud of them.
Hate that anybody has to.
Yeah. But yeah, any questions, comments?
Any other questions for Chief? You get moved? Everybody's moving this month.
No, we close, we got, our closing got pushed back till tomorrow. So tomorrow, nine AM, as soon as we're done. Boxes are being, being moved.
Great, great crowd at National Night Out.
Yeah, that was awesome. That was, that was a great event. It was a great event. Yeah. Sean and Paula.
Yeah, they did really good.
They knocked it out of the park. And they, they do really good in coordinating that. It was a fun night for all.
Well, and that's, I love the location this year too, because I think that obviously drew, you know, even more people there because of the park is amazing. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, he was in there a long time.
I was, I was.
Yeah, Happy Boss Day.
Yeah, yeah, that's the possibility. That's right.
Gloria brought in a cake. Well, for Darla. I'm for Darla, but I was walking down the hall complaining that I got nothing. So she said it, she scared it.
Yeah, National Night Out was great. It was a lot of fun. It was, it was a good turnout. Looking forward to Truck or Treat and Trick or Treat.
So we're not gonna be there for Truck or Treat because that's T M L. So I know, and I, I love that event. I think it's a great event. So sorry. Send pictures.
Halloween will be right around the corner in Santa Vista. It's on a Friday night. So we're expecting record numbers. So it should be.
Extra fun.
Yes, extra fun.
Yeah, we'll be back for that night. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for Chief?
November's meeting.
Yes, no doubt. I have that next. Okay. All right. Thank you, Chief. We'll go move on to city council comments and items for future consideration. So I know last month, we looked at or talked about maybe moving the November meeting. In the last multiple years, we have traditionally moved the November city council meeting because it's fallen in the middle of Marlin Classic. And you guys have been very kind to move off of that because of, you know, commitments from this council and people. Um, not only with staff, but council members. Uh, I know that at least one council member has a daughter that will be involved in Marlin Classic. So um, I would like to be considerate of that. And if possible, look at, maybe Fran can take a poll and.
What have, have we always, have we always moved that to a different week or did we just move it up a couple of days? I don't remember.
I think we've done multiple things. Yeah, I think um possibly moving, I mean, what, I don't know y'all's calendar, maybe moving it to Tuesday. Couple of days before.
All right, we'll have Fran poll.
Chuck, I'm looking at you. Okay, okay. Is that good for everybody? Maybe Tuesday? Okay.
So before or after, are you saying?
What's the twentieth, but move it up to the.
The eighteenth, yeah, Tuesday, the eighteenth, yeah, instead of the twentieth.
Think so.
All right, Fran will send out a, a reminder.
I think I'm good with that. Pretty, pretty sure. As of now, there's. Well, now you have to take it down.
Okay, so I think that was one of the, one of the big.
This is a little far out, but so January first is on a Thursday. So New Year's Day is on Thursday. So that, with that, put it on the fifteenth, which would be the.
Yes.
Have a conflict on the fifteenth?
That will be a December meeting discussion.
Yep, I have a conflict. We'll cross that.
Cross that bridge in December, right? Um, okay. All right. Any other city council comments or items for future consideration? Okay, hearing none. We're adjourned.